It's operated on a cost share, which is based on a sliding scale for income. The state is looking to make that strictly contribution, the voluntary contribution for next year. No official word on that yet, but we are hopeful to do away with the cost share and make that just contribution. Any questions about that program?
And then our SNAP Ed program is our supplemental nutrition assistance program. And that is for our people who are 60 and older. It includes nutrition workshops and activities that promote the policy systems and environmental changes. We're in the fifth year here in Delaware County to put this program through. The region that Delaware County covers, the state has assigned us Green County and Sullivan County, as well as Delaware County to provide these services. And Susan Hammerfleig, some of you know her, she's our coordinator for that program. And she was not able to be with us today, so I'm giving you a little bit of her information here. Andrea Martel, she is our registered dietitian who does the workshops. And she meets with people individually and as groups to give them information regarding their nutritional well-being. And let's see, the program that she has been doing for the last couple of years is called the Ten Tips for Adults. And that consists of four, a series of four classes, one hour each. And we kind of realized it was really nice timing to tie it into our health promotion classes that we have, which are the Tai Chi and the Bingo Size. You know, people are already out, they're already active and doing things for their health. So we started offering that workshop during those 20 sessions. We take four of those and Andrea will come and present. And I think that that's been very well received and it's gotten a lot of information out from people. And then as part of SNAP Ed, we have what's called the Local Roots. And that is, that's a program that Office for the Aging has a partnership with O'Connor Hospital, the Board of Directors. And then they provided $36,000 for us for the produce, specifically for the produce, to be able to get that out to people in our community. And the World Health Care Alliance provided $7,400 for that as well. And we had 200, I think we had just over 200 participants receiving the series of 10 bi-weekly produce boxes. They were either delivered to your homes or our very first year, we worked very closely with Delaware Opportunities, with the meal sites. We found that making the meal sites a gathering spot so that people could come in and pick up their boxes, their fresh produce there, it was very helpful for that. But it was also that first year, Delaware Opportunities took on a huge component for us because they were able to take a lot of those produce boxes to people who were receiving home-delivered meals, which means they don't have the ability to get out in the community as easily and so on. So these guys, aside from the meals, they were already delivering them, took these beautiful produce boxes and gave them to people as well. So it's been a great partnership all the way around and we've had a lot of success with it. The farm that has put these lovely boxes together for us is the Harry Farms. They have just done a wonderful thing. And they also have like information inside every produce box on what the vegetables are, what the things are in there. They give them ideas of how to cook them and ways to use the fresh produce. And then we've gone to, as part of the SNAP, still part of the SNAP program, we participated in the Senior Health and Funding. And we had volunteers that came along with Susan. And during that day, we had probably over 200 people at the plaza. And we had 80, I believe 82 participants that planted herb gardens that day. And then another 109 have been distributed. So that's pretty amazing. The herbs that they had, that they were planting were basil, oregano, chives, dill, and sage. And something else very much worth noting, we just found out, so it's not included in your packet, but this is amazing. New York State just shared with us that our official number that we delivered in Delaware County was 2,468 produce boxes from October of last year to September. That's how many Delaware County delivered. The state total throughout New York State was just over 3,000. So yeah, yeah, pretty significant. We've just done an amazing job with all kinds of support from others. And at the Delaware County Fair, she also had a booth there. And that was in the building, the Cornell Crawford Extension Building. She had her basil and chives, all that was there. She had tastings every day, she had things that she would create from approved recipes from the state, citrus-infused water, and a lot of information about those workshops that we're out delivering throughout the community. And seems our record shows she reached over 900 people during fair weeks.
And then we go home in, Susan made everything and each day and brought it down to the fair.
Yep, every day she made everything fresh. She's also spent time posting flyers and brochures and public places throughout our regions, visiting dining centers and senior clubs to promote the program. And she was here also when hand and celebrated their bicentennial this summer. So our registered dietitian I mentioned was Andrea, and she completed 34 nutrition classes and had over 235 people participating in that. So that kind of wraps up our larger SNAP program.
Sadly, we just were notified by the state that we're not going to receive that funding again next year. So the SNAP Ed funding has been cut. The program year is October 1st through September 30th. We will be getting an amount that we're unaware of yet to continue it from October 1st of this year through September 30th of '26, and that'll be the last year for the SNAP Ed program. We're not sure what it's going to look like yet, we're waiting for direction from the state on how we can operate that. But they're hopeful that we can include some of that funding with our health, our exercise program. Without any further ado.
So our next program is our Health and Fitness Program. And like I mentioned earlier, it incorporates Tai Chi and Bingo Size, both of which are evidence-based falls prevention programs. And it's Sun Style Tai Chi, Dr. Paul Lam created this. And we've been delivering it to the county for a number of years, to our residents. Very popular, very popular program. And in fact, one of our instructors happens to be our registered dietitian Andrea Martel. So we have a combination of volunteer and paid instructors for that. And we cover, we're in a lot of our towns, I could list them, but then you'll be like, what'd she say? If you want more, if you do want more specific information, feel free to get me a call and I'll review details with you.
I think the classes are listed too, right? The town?
Oh yeah, we've got, oh yep, so we've got most of them listed where we have them, thank you. And both programs are 10 weeks long and they meet two times a week for an hour. And the Tai Chi is very mind-centered, you know, your mind, your body, how everything connects and how it makes you more aware, more conscious of your footing, the space that you're in. Bingo Size is a little more interactive. We say our goal with Bingo Size is to deliver it the way that Dr. Jason Crandall out of Western Kentucky University created it to be delivered. It's very scripted, literally read the script to the classes. And so that's the first goal. Second goal is to have at least one lap during that hour's class. So hopefully we accomplish that. And we have, we're up to five instructors now for the Bingo Size. We have a total of four for Tai Chi. But Ms. Joanne also is an instructor for the Bingo Size. And she's just recently completed a class.
Yeah, they had a great time, they're ready to start up another class. We did have a lot of laps, more than one a class, but I think it was quite successful in my experience. And I enjoyed it.
We did do surveys and I got a lot of amazing surveys saying, please bring Joanne, can she start next week? So we'll figure something out with that. But yeah, it is very interactive and we've gotten a lot of good feedback on that program. It's just been a little while, we just have two years with the Bingo Size here. Do I do something more important?
I think you got it. Before we go on, any questions about any of the programs discussed so far? Any online viewers have any questions? No? Okay. That brings us to HEAT. So HEAT is our Home Energy Assistance Program. It's actually a program through Delaware County Department of Social Services. Office for the Aging is lucky enough to have two seasonal HEAT workers right in the office who are present to assist anybody 60 and older when filling out their applications, processing them, helping them start to finish. That's Mary Johnson and Heather Miller. They are with us from September through April, roughly, depending on how the heat season goes. This year, it is one of the programs that is having some funding cuts. So they are offering, as of now, one regular benefit, which the program starts November 3rd, and then one emergency benefit that'll take place January 1st or after. They did unfortunately cut the clean and tune program within the HEAT, which is where they'll pay for someone to come in and clean and kind of do some repairs. And then also the repair and replace. So those two programs are no longer going to be offered under HEAT. But any questions about that? No? Victoria will talk about Hi-CAP, which is our Health Insurance Information Counseling and Assistance Program, our Medicare counseling program.
Hi, good morning, everyone. So I've been the Hi-CAP coordinator for two years now, working primarily with Medicare beneficiaries. It's kind of a variety of things within the program. So a lot of times people come to the office just asking mostly for Medicare counseling, but then upon conversation, we find out that there might be some more things. So within that, I can help people with Medicaid, Medicare savings, some other financial assistance programs. Last year alone, we worked with over 600 people. And that's just myself, Betty, and Lindsay, who are counselors. I'm full-time counseling, Betty and Lindsay do part-time when they can with their schedules. Overall, our program is very busy. It's getting more busy as time goes on because the programs are getting more complicated. So with that, we always have additional training that we have to do just to be able to help people within the program. So I go to an annual conference for all the updates that the state sends out. And then Betty and Lindsay will go to the annual trainings as well for counselors. Right now, we're in our open enrollment time and all of us are booked through the end of the year. So we're going to be assisting a lot of people over the next few months.
Yeah, this is the first year that they fully booked prior to, I think by October 15th, which is the first day of open enrollment, they were down to like seven appointments a piece. So.
Do you consider hiring somebody else for this crunch time?
So we are going to be adding in two positions for 2026. And our goal is to have both of those be additional.
There's so much trouble and they can't do it this year.
So in the past, I was a full-time work counselor, but I'm very limited this year. I do have a few slots if there's somebody who, you know, isn't comfortable going to the state. You can just call and see if I'm available, but you know, if not, we can refer out to New York State.
Yep, so where anybody that we have that we don't have an appointment slot for, we are working directly with New York State Office for the Aging. There's multiple partners in the state that will call people on our behalf. So those calls will still come to us and I get them where they need to be. And then that individual will receive a return phone call. The other option is directly working with Medicare. So there's a 1-800 phone number that is right to Medicare to help people right over the phone. The other thing we're going to try to focus on next year is adding volunteers. When I'm meeting with people and they seem like they have a really good grasp on Medicare, I'll try to recruit them for volunteer work, but it's very difficult, as you know, to find volunteers in our area.
Or if you are assisted in volunteering, let us know.
Absolutely.
We actually do get a small stipend, so we can offer a little something back if anybody does want to volunteer.
We hear about companies stopping doing insurance business here. Is that going to affect this a lot or a little or a lot?
Yeah, a lot, a lot.
This year, one major company that left our area was CBPHP. And just myself, I put several hundred people into those plans last year. So now to have to do the work all over again.
Yep. How many plans did we have last year compared to this year, roughly?
I think there was 12 Medicare Advantage plans that included drug coverage. This year, we have seven.
There it is, Ms. Ed. Thank you. Any other questions? Yeah?
In regard to this process, what you're just talking about, I know that there are a lot of people who fall into that category that you just addressed. A friend of mine included. And I know you're booked until the end of the year, right? And she's going to try to call you to make an appointment, however, it's too late, right, for her? Because you're booked already till the end of the year?
Nope, so the nice thing with those companies leaving us is they actually give us more time. Anybody that's losing a plan because of the consolidation or the ending of a contract, technically those individuals have until the end of February 2026 to make a new plan choice without penalty. Our goal was to try to get as many people in and corrected by the end of the year. That way there was no lapse in coverage because of the plans ending December 31st.
Well, yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Also, Ms. Ed, I just learned from that the UPC Church in Walton, the Redbury Church, they're having a meeting the end of October from an insurance agent from Deli that is going to talk about this very insurance company. And they're, you know, it's going to be open to the public about, you know, alternative insurance insurers, right? So it's something out there. If anybody needs also more information, they can go to that meeting. And it will be, I believe, on a Wednesday. I should have brought the, I happened to be at the anniversary yesterday of the church. So I got the information. So I just put it out there for information purposes.
Thank you.
I believe this one, Delaware Tech tomorrow.
Yeah, so a lot of those are usually run by brokers.
Okay.
They're contracted by different plans.
That makes sense.
Yep. So we can't do much with them, but we can provide a list of brokers in the area. If, you know, we're at absolute max capacity, we can provide a list. We can't recommend one or over the other, but we can give. You got a question?
Just if you could clarify a little on the extension period going into February, if you're being cut off by CBPHP. Does that mean that the CBPHP program was still in on January 1st and you would be out of insurance during that period?
Yeah, yeah, so the way the contract works is that when they say that your insurance is ending December 31st, that is when your coverage ends, you have that service time. But what the state and federal government CMS is who oversees Medicare, because there's so many people in this situation, they know not everybody's going to be able to get in enough time. There's thousands of people on these plans. They're giving that extension for situations like this where us and brokers and everybody, they're trying to get as many people served as possible. So they give, it's called a special enrollment period because of that contract ending, which they determined a couple of years ago when this whole situation started with multiple other companies, this was implemented. They decided to give till the end of February for no penalties. You can complete that enrollment anytime starting October 15th through the end of February. The way it works though is that your insurance plan will end December 31st. If you were able to choose a new plan and complete the enrollment within October, November, December, your new plan will begin January 1st. If you're somebody who wasn't able to get an appointment and doesn't complete the enrollment until in January, it will begin February 1st. It will always begin the first month, the first day of the following month. So it's just a regulation because of the plan consolidations that everybody has agreed on so that everybody can get that coverage with no penalties.
Well, you would be likely to be without insurance during that period.
You would, yeah. So what they do is they technically revert you back to original Medicare. So you'll always have that coverage, but then they give you that extra time to choose if you want to enroll into a new Advantage Plan or something else.
Any other questions? No online questions? No? Our Language Link, we do have a contract with, I'm going to say this wrong, Lingual Link? Lingual Link through New York State Office for the Aging. We can use it as an interpretation service for any language that there is. So if anybody needs assistance and doesn't speak English, we can still assist. We can use it in people's homes, over the phone, in the office, by anything necessary. Our National Family Caregiver Support Program, that's our legacy program, our respite care program. There are some changes that started this year and they'll carry over to next year. In the past, it's always been a volunteer-based program. So if somebody was a caregiver and was a little overwhelmed and was 60 or older, we could provide a volunteer if one was available to go in and kind of provide a break once or twice a month. Now we're able to offer a voucher or a payment for $600 to be used throughout the program year, which is October 1st through September 30th. And it can be run on a caregiver-directed model. So what that means is the caregiver can choose somebody that they know and trust and will provide some funding to help pay that person, provide some care, some respite. There's also additional criteria. The eligibility has been open and that's listed in your packet. I won't bore you by going over all of it, but you could be a parent, not a parent, sorry. You can be, yes, you can be a parent of a disabled adult child and receive help with this. Any questions about that? No?
Sorry, I was one of those volunteers, yeah, legacy program, I should know maybe. So I don't think there are clients at the moment. And the legacy program as originally implemented is no longer in existence, correct?
It is.
It is?
Yeah, we're just broadening the services that can be offered. So we still use volunteers, we just haven't had a huge need for it right now while we're kind of revamping it.
So I could technically be one of those volunteers. But how, I don't know personally, somebody who needs my assistance or whatever, I always rely on the legacy program to connect me. So I could technically, you know, talk to Jonathan.
You could, yep.
I mean, but I haven't heard anything. I'm sure there are clients out there who need people like me.
I agree, I agree, and we have to reach out to them. So our goal for 2026, because this program kind of just revamped midsummer, is to do a lot of outreach and education and let people know that this program still exists and how it can be used. So if you, like for instance with the church, if you would like us to come down and do a presentation, we'd be more than happy to do something like that.
Okay, thanks, Lindsay.
Yeah, thank you. Our legal services, we do still hold a contract with the Legal Aid Society of New York. We just renewed that contract, so that'll go into 2026 as well. They can do simple legal things such as wills, power attorneys, healthcare proxies, small civil matters. That's pretty much it. They won't do anything like for monetary gain, so you can't use them to go after somebody for money or anything like that, a lot of estate planning type stuff. Cherry, do you want to talk about the Personal Emergency Response System?
Sure, sure. So as Lindsay said, Personal Emergency Response System, you'll see us refer to it or hear us refer to it as PERS. And we have a contract with Connect America and have for about, just over three years now actually with them. And as of this morning, our numbers changed just a little bit. I was looking at it before we got here. We have 560 people throughout Delaware County that are using the service. And we have six of them on a waiting list for a unit. And when we talk about a waiting list, it's not because we don't have the units available, it's just because the individual is waiting for a tech to come. They didn't want to set it up themselves, so they're waiting for, we have just one installer in our community, so. But mostly people opt for just having it mailed to their home. And it's very simple to set up, the directions are there. There's an 800 number that the Connect America team will walk you right through the process if you're, you know, wondering about it at all, they're great. And having that available to us with their team through Connect America 24/7 has allowed Office for the Aging to not put staff on call. So we no longer have staff that have to respond to these situations. If something comes up with a unit and it's not working properly, that they have to go out and try to figure out what's happened with it. So that's been a really great change. This year, we've also, we've been given the opportunity to offer people the smartwatches. And the smartwatch, what that does is, again, you wear it like a watch, it does your heartbeat. I believe it does your steps as well. And if you need help, you push it. And originally, when that device was created by Connect America, there was a $150 one-time fee if you wanted to make use of that. And eventually they got us to $100 for the one-time fee. And I'm like, we still, we just can't, we don't have any way to do that. And within the last couple of months, three months maybe, relatively, not too long ago, they said, you know what, if your people can benefit from this watch, would like to try this watch, we will completely waive the one-time fee. So with that, we started introducing that. We have a few people that are making use of that service right now. And the brochures that are on the table here, there might be some on the back table as well. I'm not sure, they might have all been brought. So they, there is a Connect America brochure there. And it will, if you open it up, you'll see what we're talking about with the smartwatch, along with the other options that are offered, the little on-go minis and landlines for people who aren't on the go so often or don't have really great cell service in their home. We still have the landlines that people can use and not have to be bound by the other technology. And coming in January of 2026, we now have the ability to, instead, when we started out, it was a sliding fee scale that set the contribution for the month for people who were using the service. And that's going to be gone and it's going to just be offered as a $20 flat contribution request for any of the units. Yep, per month.
Before, it ranged from 18 up to $32. So we figured just the flat rate is going to hopefully help out people and make it more affordable.
And some of you are aware, but not everybody would be, Connect America also, they have a technology to have these units so that they can detect a fall. And if people want that service, it's always cost $6 a month to add that on. And as part of a contract with us, they recognize the need that a lot of our community members have. And they said, you know what, we won't ask you to pay that $6 a month. So if people want that falls detection, they can have it without that extra charge. So that was pretty significant. We also have a few. We also have a few insurance companies that will assist people with that contribution. So, um, we have, like, with Medicaid, people who have Medicaid and are a part of the Long-Term Care Program over at, um, the Department of Social Services, they will cover the cost, we have a contract for them to cover it, we have a contract for Nacentsia, I Circle, um, VNS?
Fidelis.
Fidelis, Fidelis, thank you. So, that, that covers...
Great, any questions about that service? Online, okay. Our non-emergency medical transportation, aside from our Medicare counseling, it's probably one of our most popular programs. Um, in fact, it's, it's grown so popular that we recently contracted with an outside source to handle all of our coordinating and scheduling. Um, that program runs April first through March thirty-first. And April first of twenty twenty-four to March thirty-first of this year, we have, through the use of volunteer drivers, provided six hundred eighty-two round trips. Um, that's picking up at home to their appointment and bringing them back home. Um, our volunteer drivers have accumulated close to seventy-two thousand miles that they've provided. So, um, we knew we had to think outside the box. We had fourteen moms here studying.
Close to, yeah.
And we had, um, four staff people responsible for taking those calls, coordinating it. It really was a full-time job. Um, you know, people calling in, meeting rides all day long. So there's a program through the Royal Health Network of South Central New York called Get There, or the Get There Call Center, and they've recently started a new program called the Volunteer Service. Those are individuals who are hired and trained just to do the scheduling and coordinating. So as of October first, our contract was effective, and we now refer people to Get There to schedule their rides. I think all but one of our volunteer drivers have signed on with the Volunteer, um, Transportation Service through the Royal Health Network. So people that normally would call us can still call this other entity and use the same volunteer driver that they were using before. In doing this partnership, we'll call it, um, we've been able to run the funding because they have their own funding. Senior Council provides some funding along with O'Connor, um, just to support Delaware County residents who are sixty and older. So hopefully, this contract allows us to serve a lot more than what we were able to in the past. Yeah, so we did a six-month trial contract, October first through March thirty-first, just to see how it goes, get some feedback from our clients. If all goes well, we'll do it for a full year, twenty-six to twenty-seven. If not, we'll bring it back in-house. But I, I think so far, we've gotten some pretty good feedback, so...
Yeah.
Um, one of the, she's the volunteer program manager for the Volunteer Transportation Service within this program. She reached out after the first week, and she was like, wow, I knew it was gonna be busy. I didn't know it was gonna be that busy, so...
It's also, it's also pretty nice, too, because, um, if, if individuals called in to get the ride and they, they weren't able to get a driver for them, Get There was the next person that we would give them a telephone number and say, reach out to them, they may be able to assist you. Um, so that, that kind of, that's really nice, because then they're not gonna be like, well, we call here, then we call there. They're going to call Get There directly and, and hopefully get their needs met.
Yeah, in addition to the volunteers that provide rides, they have funding where they provide money for a taxi service or, um, some other transportation or gas cards to have somebody drive them. So it opens up a lot more doors for people who need transportation.
And what is the cost to the individual?
It's just a suggested contribution.
Is it a contribution?
It is.
Someone I know just used that service, and they were unsure, should I give them a tip? What is, you know, what should I do? So it's a purely, um...
Yeah, they'll mail out a letter requesting a contribution, usually the end of the month.
Yeah.
I think so, yes.
Um, and they, they prefer that you don't provide any tips. I know some of the, the clients that use it, they'll like to treat their driver to lunch or something like that. That's at their discretion, but there should be no money exchanged during the trip. Yeah. So the phone number to schedule a ride, um, is one eight five five?
Lindsay, no.
Oh, yeah, they just...
They, they're having issues with their one eight five five number, we just found out Friday. So unfortunately, I don't have...
That's okay. We'll, we'll update it, we'll put it out. Um, but, you know, if you need a ride, you can always call us, and we'll, we'll point you in the, the right direction. I just forgot, they reached out close Friday afternoon and said they're having some technical difficulties, probably because of math and math, all of them are coming. Technology. Um, our New York Connect program has been around since before my time. I think it started here in Delaware County in two thousand and ten. For a while. Um, it's a very popular program. Usually, if you call the office, you're gonna speak with a New York Connect staff person first. Um, they can do people who are sixty and older and individuals who are under sixty with a disability. Um, could be mental health, could be special abuse, caregivers, veterans. Their job literally is to be a phone book of resources. So they're supposed to know or, or be able to get the answers to any programs that exist in the county and in the surrounding area. That is the program that we're lacking staff right now. Um, in the past year, we had two positions cut for that program. They will be re-added back in effective January first. So, that, that program alone handles most of our agency's outreach, our public ed-education. I think in July and August alone this year, our New York Connect staffs have done thirty-seven, approximately, in-person, um, education events. So they're, they're out there spreading the word about programs and services. Um, they did a week-long booth at the Delaware County Fair, where they saw close to two thousand individuals that week. So those two new staff people will be Medicare counselors as well, hopefully. Any questions about any of that? Senior Council, do either of you want to talk about senior council or not?
I could, but the biggest, uh, being newest member of the senior council, the biggest problem I see is we need more participation. It's hard to get people from the far edges of the county to come to our meetings. And our main goal is to raise funds for seniors in Delaware County and have good information for seniors in Delaware County. Again, we're just hoping, there, there's new senior groups, a new form in the county, but they haven't participated in the senior council, which Wayne was still here. He could give you some history, but we'd like to get more people.
He had another meeting. Yeah, so Senior Council does, um, the fundraising for Office for the Aging. Two of their biggest fundraising events are the Big Wheels Golf Tournament and the Pork Dinner and Pie Option.
And, and the Harvest Festival, Apple thing.
And, yep, the Harvest Festival, there's, there's several events that they do, and they, um, sponsor some of our events, like our Senior Ball, um, our Senior Health and Fund Day, and then various events throughout the year. Their Big Wheels Golf Tournament this year alone, uh, was able to raise a little over seven thousand dollars. Which is great.
Then we'll assist with the purchase of the bus.
Yeah, the bus, the building.
And also, just to recognize, um, one of our newest senior clubs representatives that got that up and running are here with us today at the meeting, and they're in the back of the room. Yeah, we have John, and we have, um, oh my gosh, he's crying. We've known each other for decades. I'm gonna blame it on the camera over there. So, um, they, they started, they started a club over in Margaretville, so, thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. That is great. Senior Council has been in existence since nineteen seventy-three. Amazing. So on that note, that brings us to one of our most popular events, our Senior Ball. Joanne's gonna talk a little bit about that.
We had our third annual Senior Ball.
Biggest one yet?
The biggest one, yeah. The Royal Regency Ball, and it was held at the Walton Fairgrounds, and it was a huge success. Um, we had about a hundred and fifteen participants, which included some staff. Um, I, people just can't say enough about, um, the event and recognize and appreciate the amount of work that goes into it specifically and solely for our seniors. They really do appreciate it, um, compliments, uh, can't wait for next year to occur. And it, it just, um, it's a very popular event, and it's growing each year. Um, I just, I can't say enough about it. Uh, we, we did, we changed it up a little bit this year. We had a trivia contest, which was well received. Um, we have the dancing, the DJ, uh, the photographer. Everybody's getting their picture taken in, in, um, formal mode or, or funny mode, in character. Uh, it's just really a, a fun event on a Sunday afternoon in September. Um, people are looking forward to it again for next year. Um, we may change it up a little bit next year, we may try to find a different location. Um, just to, just to give, you know, a, a different opportunity, maybe to a different, um, venue. We're not sure. Um, but it is growing, and we need to have a large space for it. Um, so we're looking forward to that and starting planning probably right after the first of the year. Um, but, um, again, it was a, it was a great success.
We are open to suggestions for the ball. Um, this year, our sponsors included WellCare by Fidelis, CDPHP, um, Baker's Grim, Bagels and Cream, Senior Council. Remembering any?
One of our staff members is, um, a baker, Amy Bowery, and, and she, uh, she provided a lot of, uh, special treats that everybody enjoyed, and the, the plates were clean, and, um, the dessert tray, so, um, I think...
This year, um, Sloan from Ollyana, Sloan's New York Grill, they cater. So it's sliced brisket and salted potatoes, and it was very delicious.
Yeah, yeah, it's really great.
Senior Health and Fund Day. You wanna do that one? You want me to?
Oh, sure. What a rainy day that was, but we still had four hundred in attendance, fifty, about fifty vendors, and the rest seniors and staff and volunteers. Um, it was really a lot of fun.
It was.
Um, everybody had came in good humor, understanding that we couldn't cancel. It's too big of an event to reschedule because of the weather. Um, with that being said, I think we have to look for a new venue for next year.
Um, this was the first year since I've been around that we had to create a waiting list for the event. So we usually cap it at three hundred and fifty, and that's because of their venue size and capacity. Um, I think we had close to fifty on a waiting list.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, because of the rain, we were able to call some of them and have them come down. And like Joanne said, we still had close to four hundred people in attendance, even with the rain.
Yeah, yeah.
So we have booked, um, the Walton Fairgrounds for next year's event. And we're gonna move it up a month. It'll be July fifteenth instead of August next year. So July fifteenth at the Walton Fairgrounds. Um, this is in part to eliminate the need for, every year, we have to sign a contract with City Delhi and then shuttle people in because there's no parking at Camp Changitong. The fairgrounds will allow people to drive straight to the venue, um, which again, will allow more people to be able to attend.
I know.
Um, it'll eliminate the cost of a tent. Every year, we have to rent a tent. They have the pavilions and the barns right there that will be able to be used as well, so...
And thanks to Senior Council and also the SNAP Head Program, um, they help with the cost of the tent and the tables and the chairs, which is quite significant, yes.
You said July fifteenth, right?
Yep, yep.
My memory isn't very good, so I might write it down.
Don't miss it, I can't... We'll advertise it all over because it will be such a different time this year. Our hope in moving it up to July is better weather. A lot of people have set up the event, um, this is the fourth year that we've had rain in a row. Can't control the weather, but we can't dispute. Uh, we also do the fair, um, the public hearing, our ball, all of that right around the same time, so...
I'd like to spread it out a little bit, you have the golf tournament in May, and then June is the pie option. So July, we'll have the Senior Fund Day, August, the fair, September, the ball.
And before, you couldn't have a tent, um, because camp is still in session, so you couldn't...
So we'll give that a try. I'm sure it'll be as successful as all the others have been.
Yeah. Um, and again, open to any suggestions. Anything that you would like to see offered at Senior Fund Days, um, we're open to adding more activities. So we, we have a bunch of ideas, which I think will be really, really great, but always open to hear from, from all of you. So shoot us an email, give us a call, write us a letter, stop in. Any questions? No? All right, transportation. We currently have two buses, and we have three part-time bus drivers. So our bus operates on a fixed route three times a week with additional trips as needed. Um, during the summer, we do a lot of special trips. Do you want to talk about someone?
Um, this year, we added some new trips. We're going to Kobol Scale, Norwich. Um, last fall, we went to Lake George. We tried, we had it scheduled to go this year, but unfortunately, one of the buses was broke down. Um, so hopefully, we can reschedule that for the springtime when things start to open up up there. Um, we go to Bainbridge to the Frog Con and the Pine Ridge Store over there, they love that. Um, I've been trying to get some suggestions for the winter months to see where we can go. Definitely, if anybody has anything in mind, let me know. Um, I think that's about it.
Is there anything local? Um, I'm bringing this up because I know at least one person is probably more at, at, uh, a hotel just outside Delhi, is it, or is it just...
So on Thursdays, uh, I wanna say twice a month, sometimes three months, three times a month, um, when our bus comes back from Ollyanta, we do pick up in Delhi, and we can take them to the Price Shopper Plaza. So some people can go to, like, get their medications, Price Shopper, or some people even just hop over to McDonald's.
All right, there's something to do, bring them for shopping, so that they can go whether they have a half an hour to shop.
I think they have about an hour.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
How would we get in touch with that, how would I get in touch with that program?
Just call the main number, uh, Office for the Aging, and just let us know that you're looking for the bus, and we can, uh, get you to the right person.
Do you have the number, or do you need it?
I, I can look up the number, I'll see if it on topic.
Rachel, hi, it's a little... Rachel handles our bus reservations, so you speak with Rachel. Um, this past year, we had two hundred riders utilize the bus, and we provided a hundred and ninety-four trips. Um, that's thirty more riders than the previous program year, so... We've also utilized it to provide thirteen additional trips to the hundred and ninety-four just for medical reasons. So that's something we'll continue to do as well. And then lastly, well, that lastly, who's that? Do you want to just give a very brief overview of our budget?
For twenty twenty-five, um, all I think is two million five hundred sixty, total, thousand sixty-three, five hundred sixty-five dollars. It's a big number, it's a big number. Um, we're right on track right now, um, for our budget for twenty twenty-five. For 2026, we have presented our worksheets and our, I don't know if we call preliminary at this stage. We just call it worksheets to the.
Your worship.
Our worship. And I think we're probably going to be a little bit under budget this year, or under this year's budget, or 2026's budget for 2025.
And that brings us to Patty, who oversees probably the most, one of the most important and most utilized programs that OFA offers. And that's our meal program.
So for this year, we're totally on track with our numbers. We're going to end up serving between 87,000 and 88,000 meals this year. We, for the first time in a long time, are fully staffed. We had our last evening meal. We tried themed meals this year to give the seniors something to look forward to. We had a Mexican night. We had the Halloween party. And that went over very well. We have seen each month more and more participation in the evening meals. Whereas last year, if we had two or three people, that was a lot. We have partnered with the local groups, also that our home-delivered people, we delivered all of those boxes on the road. And all of the boxes actually came into our congregation meal sites where with Susan, we were able to distribute them to all the Walton people as well. We really truly were looking for next year to try and have crafts for our seniors during lunchtime. We are partnered with Office of the Aging and we have the flower baskets that we do. We're just trying to really increase the reason to come there. It's for socialization, but also for creativity, which sometimes, you know, our seniors, they spend a lot of time at home. They spend a lot of time in front of the television. We would love to be able to expand, you know, their creativity and expand their mind. Maybe do trivia at the meal sites as well.
And that's why it was so important partnering this year with them for people in the community that didn't get home-delivered meals, but wanted to participate in the produce boxes. It was just a wonderful opportunity for them to come in. Some people never seen their local dining center. So to have a reason to go there, to pick up their box, and when they see the friendly faces and, you know, they smell the food cooking, it's like, oh, how is available? You know, so it was really eye-opening for some people that had never been part of that.
Also, we, in the recent couple of months, have really, our workers have really come to realize how important that we are in our home-delivered clients' lives. We've had three calls recently where our driver smelled the smell of propane and actually had to be, they called 911. They called the propane company and the senior had to be taken out and there was a leak. And if it weren't for our driver, the client never smelled it and it was there. We had another client last week where our driver delivered a meal and called us and said, it was just not something right about him today. His off, his speech doesn't really kind of make any sense. And we were able again to call and intervene before something was going to happen and he did get help and went to the hospital. So those are the kinds of things that, you know, we can't, it's just so fulfilling that we are actually there and we're making a difference in those people's lives.
But we didn't foresee the evening meals starting up again?
Oh, absolutely. In fact, we're already planning for next year's themed meals and to try and make it more fun.
But it was a plan to stop here and move along with that?
It always is. October's less because of the time changes and so it's darker earlier. So the meals have always been April through October.
Oh, definitely.
And cold.
And cold. The floral arrangements, which Betty had organized last year, and it was such a huge success. And not just like what she did to organize it, Betty was amazing. And then the senior councils, their model, their motto is seniors helping seniors. So we presented to them and told them what she had arranged for the people and they're like, you know what? We're going to pay for a good portion of that floral arrangement. So it's just wonderful, Lucy.
And we tied it into the senior dining program either before or after the meal. So that really keeps people or brings more people out. Same thing with, I think your Tai Chi class and maybe I think all Tai Chi classes before a meal, at the meal site. So tying it all together.
Well, the meal is, you know, a nutritional meal, so important. So is socialization and trying to mitigate isolation and loneliness. So it all ties them together.
Well, one thing you're not mentioning is that the food is really good.
So we've tried over the last couple of years to get away from processed food. I know a lot of other senior dining programs in other counties rely heavily on, because the cost is less per meal. We were very fortunate to hear the Earth Song partnered with us as well. And they also, they provided fresh fruit and vegetables for us to, one, give back to seniors, but also for us to prepare for the seniors as well. So we really have been striving to make the quality of the meals much better, much healthier. By cooking fresh, we are able to really eliminate a lot of the excess sodium, which anything that is already pretty made has to be.
And did you notice any of the significance of, we did have to change the cost that I think we were made a little bit. I don't think it made much of an impact. I think it's easily received.
Absolutely. So the fact they made the suggested contribution was raised from $3 to $5 for those seniors 60 and older. Anybody under 60, their contribution is $10 because there's no subsidy for that. We have, we really had no complaints about it and everybody who is able to contribute does. And we always make it clear that, you know, you're unable to, that we don't turn anybody away.
But it's okay.
Sure. Beginning of the year was 13,74 was our cost for the meal.
Thank you, Patty. Any questions?
Yeah, I'm so sorry. I just wanted to comment about when you talked about socialization for seniors. We have heard, as you know, the Walton family senior program too. And every Wednesday, two of their clients come over to our Walton, our place to continue the socialization, to play games. Because they just need that. So maybe like I would just suggest, after your, after their meals at Delhi, they could, some could just stay on and continue the socialization with games or whatever. These two individuals really enjoy, you know, the continuation of the socialization. And that's so important, we find.
For many of our meal sites, we have a contract with our, it's their shared facilities. And so we do have a contract of time that we can be there and that is eight to one. So that is why we try to have things happen in those hours.
I will say though, the Delhi site is connected to Office for the Aging. The meal starts at 11:30. Usually people are done eating around noon and they're still there until 1 o'clock. But they do utilize this, yeah. They utilize this space to socialize.
A couple decks of cards written purple.
I think there's books there. There's little letters very good support. And we, Office for the Aging have discussed opening the dining center in 2026 for certain activity nights. More information to follow, just in the works.
In Delhi, I believe they were playing bingo, like starting at 11 or something, around there.
That was our.
That seemed to be quite popular.
Yeah, that's when, with our bingo size or Tai Chi, we did try to schedule when we could do them in the dining centers. We tried to get the instructors to be able to do them, the class from 10:30 to 11:30. That way, you're already out, you're already there with people socializing and, oh, there is a lunch right now if you would like to participate.
We have an appetite.
Yeah, we very intentionally made those classes happen in all of our dining centers between 10:30 and 11:30 where we could, for that reason. Yeah, it's been a real thumbs up for people. They're already out and joining.
Gives people now for me to dress up and show up.
Get up.
In the case of our, our new club in Margaretville, which is called Seasons Social Club, we do meet in conjunction with senior meals right after, near the end of the senior meals and then just the following hour after that. And we found a good, we have a good relationship with the facilitator there as well as the church that we can continue on. Run over that. So we do encourage after our meeting to have additional activities such as bingo or card club or whatever. Follow that. And in both of the dancing and senior field program, while we also try to run a sponsor club in conjunction with it.
Yeah, absolutely. And just, I just would like to say quickly, we talk about, we kind of, we do talk about as bingo. Bingo size is what the actual class is and it's very important to make that differentiation because the very first class I had had 19 people at it in Grand Gorge. And so my first question to them all was, how many of you are here because you heard we were playing bingo today? And not one of them raised their hand. If that was the only reason you were coming today is because you're a bingo lover, you're going to be disappointed. Because this is about exercise, this is about socialization. This is about learning things that can help you to prevent falls in your home, out in the community, strengthening your legs, you know, things like that. So I said, it's a whole lot more than the bingo numbers that we call throughout the hour.
Any questions, comments?
Going back to your budgets, it looked like the federal part will stay or is that in question with all the political alignment nowadays?
Really, the two main cuts that we're seeing from the federal side are that SNAP Ed program and the GATE program. They did propose a lot more cuts, which they then came back and said, no. So as of right now, while those two programs are very significant, we are pretty lucky. Hopefully, nothing else comes down.
I think we presented very well.
Thank you.
Would like to make an appointment with one of you gals for the Medicare Advantage because we follow the CDPHP get murdered. Now, can I do that today?
I have no appointments left at all. I have nothing.
Yeah, I have. So I've done yours the past couple of years. I can put you in somewhere. Do you want to just give me your name and I'll give you a call?
Okay, Betty Gell, and it's 607-561-9387.
I'll give you a call later today.
We're in soon, but I'll call any of us.
We'll work something out.
Okay, good.
Do you know if Jenny Wilcox called your office? Because she's in the same boat and she wanted somebody to come to Amber.
They have probably hundreds of people.
We've got, right now, we have over 100 voicemails we haven't even gotten yet.
I'm sure she's called.
Yes, she has.
She has, good. November, perfect. Great, she would be proactive. We'll just talk to you.
Any other questions? No? Then we're all set. Thank you all for coming.